Good evening, good evening. I had a little technical problems for a few minutes. My name is Max Parker. I'm president of the San Angelo Independent School District Board of Trustees. I'd like to welcome you all here to our regular meeting of January 2022. I'm going to read you a script of the rules that we try to follow at every meeting. And as I do that, I also want to welcome those who are watching the recording of this meeting online on our public access channel, suddenly Channel 4. We appreciate all of you that are here and all of you that are watching. We appreciate your interest in our students and in our district. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times every month, and most, if not all, of the items on our agenda, which we'll be discussing tonight, we discussed last Monday at our pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, we're here to listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments on an agenda item. Anyone wishing to make comments on an item should do their best to limit their comments to five minutes or less. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones at this time. I want to remind anyone that is speaking on an item that's not on our agenda that by state law, we cannot reply to anything that you might comment on except to thank you for your comments since it's something that hasn't been posted as an agenda item. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting and to thank you for taking time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. That said, I will call this meeting to order and see that we have a quorum. All our board members are here, and I appreciate that, except for Mr. Gallegos, who called a few minutes ago to say that he would probably not be able to make it because of some problems he was having at work. Our invocation tonight was to be given by Tony Valdez, pastor of Edmund Boulevard Baptist Church, but he also let us know that he is suffering from COVID and can't be here. So I'm going to ask my fellow board member and past president, Lanny Lehman, if he will lead us in our invocation tonight.
Well, you pray with me, please. Our most gracious and loving heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the blessings of this day and every day, Father. Please be with us as a board team and certainly as a district as we continue to navigate the district through uncertain and uncharted waters, Father. We thank you for entrusting us with the education and the lives and the ability for us to be with and work with the 14,000 students of SAISD. Father, we're thankful for our teachers, our administrators, all of our staff members. Father, we know that there's bus drivers and cafeteria workers and just a myriad of other people that are influential in the students, in the lives of our students, and we appreciate and thank them. Father, we ask that you give us wisdom as we work through our meeting tonight and our meeting agenda. Help us to have the courage to do what's right for all of our students. Also, help us to listen to the concerns that might be brought before us here this evening. Father, we ask that you do everything, help us to do everything possible to help students reach their full potential, Father, and support all that they do. Father, we're thankful for, again, for the opportunity that we have to be here this evening. We ask that you watch over our meeting, and we thank you for all these things. We thank you for your Lord and Savior, and we pray this prayer in His name. Amen.
Thank you, Lanny. All right, we've got some Bradford Elementary students here that have come to help us with our pledge of allegiance to the United States flag and the Texas flag. And as I call your name, would you please come forward? We have Elena Hockes, a second grader, Zane LaBragna, a third grader, Abigail Alcantara, a fourth grader, and Santiago Soria, a fifth grader. Would you all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, guys. Stay up here. If y'all will stay up here, parents, if you want to come up and take photos. I know you're proud of these students. We heard from you last week. We appreciate you allowing them to be with us tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, on our agenda, we're going to have several recognitions, and I'm just telling those, I know we have a couple that have signed up to speak, to let you know that we will, after we have the recognitions, then we'll call you forward to anybody that wants to speak on something not on the agenda. I'm going to turn it over right now to our communication directors, Whitney Wood and Molly Turk, for several different recognitions they have on our agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Parker and distinguished members of the board. We are so proud to live in a community where the spirit of generosity is alive and well, and it was so wonderful to see it in action for our second annual San Angelo Reads Day in celebration of our community-wide literacy initiative last month. Tonight, we have a recognition honoring all of our generous community partners who contributed to our San Angelo Reads Day success with a special thank you to our friends at Whataburger. Whataburger partnered with us as part of their Feeding Students Success program to gift a new book, Going Places, to each and every one of our SAISD third grade students to celebrate the day and inspire a love of reading. Whataburger's Feeding Students Success program empowers students on their educational journey and made for a perfect collaboration to promote and encourage reading and help us to do the good work of getting books directly into the hands of San Angelo children. In addition to the books, they also added to the fun of the day with special bookmarks and a delicious start to the day for Lamar Elementary staff. We simply could not make San Angelo Reads as effective or fun for our community without generous partners and supporters of public education that care about San Angelo like Whataburger. In just a single year from our launch of San Angelo Reads, we were able to grow participation exponentially from community partners. New groups like Whataburger, San Angelo Retired Teachers and Associates, Shannon Medical Center, and more joined in the fun and important cause of championing literacy. With sincere appreciation, tonight we recognize our 2021-2022 San Angelo Reads partners, including First Community Federal Credit Union, the Adult Literacy Council, Angelo State University, Card My Yard, the City of San Angelo, Enchanted Parties, Fast Signs of San Angelo, Gandy Inc., Goodfellow Air Force Base, and Ms. Teresa, our liaison, HEB Howard College, the Junior League of San Angelo Children's Literacy Project, Kixi 94.7 FM, KLST and KCNTV, Lamar Advertising, the San Angelo Police Department, the San Angelo Retired Teachers and Associates, Scholastic Education, Shannon Medical Center, Southwest Outdoor Advertising, the Tom Green County Library System, The United Way of the Concho Valley, and last but not least, Whataburger, who we have invited here this evening to accept our appreciation. Tonight, on behalf of the awesome Whataburger team, we have joining us Area Manager, Mr. David Boney. If you can please come forward at this time. We sincerely thank you for your commitment and dedication, I'm going to stand over here, to San Angelo and our students, the future of San Angelo, and Dr. Detloff, there he is, if you will join us for a photo.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Whataburger has been an incredible partner. And finally, to show our recognition of community partners and Whataburger, we have a short slideshow to show a glimpse of the wonderful second San Angelo Reads Day. In addition to our community partners, I am so proud of the communications team. Special shout out to Alba Benuelos, AKA Clifford the Big Red Dog, for being our celebrity for the day. She spent so much extra time and energy and was pretty exhausted by the end of the day because she was so popular with the kiddos. And of course, Molly and Jack, as well as the amazing CNI team, including a group led by Ricky Black and Ashley Crane, who put together activity packets to accompany the books from Whataburger. And our amazing campuses, who really ran with it this year. They brought incredible, unique ideas and fun to the day to inspire a love of reading with their students and staff. We are so proud and thankful for our difference makers that made it an impactful day and will continue the good work. So keep reading San Angelo and enjoy the slideshow. We just wanted y'all to see a glimpse of it because it was, really grew so much from the first year. and for the San Angelo Reads Day, and they contributed everything from time to doing their own activities post the school day. Again, this is a community-wide literacy initiative. We want to extend it beyond the classroom, and we saw a lot more of the support out in the community and post-day events and on their own social pages and that sort of thing. So thanks again, thank you, Whataburger. And now I'm going to pass it over to our Executive Director Athletics to celebrate our Lakeview Chiefs.
Thank you, Whitney, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, Board of Trustees. It's my honor to introduce, shortly. Introduce the athletic coordinator, head football coach, Hector Guevarre, to introduce the Lakeview Chiefs of 2021.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'll introduce the boys that were able to make it today. J.D. Salgado, Kate Henry, Jimmy Chapoy, Antonio Ronquillo, Chet Short. First of all, I would like to say thank you to the school board, Dr. Detloff, administration, Julie, Jessica, for all the hard work they put in daily and know that is recognized and greatly appreciated. Thank you to Lakeview administration, parents, guardians, maintenance, crew, transportation, you know, to make this season possible. I was proud of the boys, did a great job this year, competed well, represented our school well. Very proud of them. I know you see a small number, but we've got a lot of kids working or that are at another event, school event. Special thanks to the coaches. Coach Mejia, he's right there, present, Coach Cosides, Coach Gonzalez, Coach Hall, Coach Hernandez, Coach Plata, Coach Reyes, Coach Als, and our Lincoln staff, Coach Als, Coach Herrera, Coach Flores, Coach Perez. And our special thanks to our trainers, Coach Vanderburg and Coach Wildy, and their student trainers, for all the work they do. Real proud of the kids. Real quick, I'm going to read some of these accolades that they've received. Co-defensive MVP, Josh Torres. First-team offense, Ricky Ramirez, running back. John Cepeda, O-lineman. Elijah Stone, kicker. Second-team offense, quarterback Jacob Chapa. Alan Salazar, running back. Second-team wide receiver Wyatt Henry. Wide receiver Davastin Manley. Tight end, Antonio Ronquillo. Honorable mention, offense, wide receiver Jason Anderson. Wide receiver Adrian Flores. Quarterback Kate Henry. O-lineman Willie Rodriguez. O-lineman Chet Short. First-team defense, D-lineman Juan Ortiz. Second-team defense, J.D. Salgado. Defensive back Brandon Dureo. Defensive back Brandon Cruz. Punter, Josh Torres. Utility special teams, Kate Henry. First-team honorable mention defense, defensive lineman Elias Talamantes. D-line, Joe Saldivar. Andrew Rivera. Lucas Mary, defensive back. Defensive back Derek Taylor. Linebacker, Taven White. Texas academic, all-state. These kids had maintained an average of 92 or above since starting from the freshman year. Kate Henry received second-team all-state academic. Jacob Chapa, honorable mention. Antonio Ronquillo, honorable mention. Chet Short, honorable mention. Once again, we'd like to thank you for everything you guys do for us. These kids did a great job from day one into our final game. Thank you.
Whitney and Molly, you're still up.
All right, those me off a little when we're switching back and forth. Okay, so tonight, I have the honor, on behalf of San Angelo ISD, of thanking some very special servant leaders who are often so actively involved in overseeing the many great things going on in our district, as well as the challenges and opportunities, that we don't have a moment to pause and express our gratitude. January is school board month nationally and in the state of Texas, and as of this morning in the city of San Angelo. So today, we pause to honor you. Thank you to our seven committed and dedicated school board trustees. Thank you to Gerard Gallegos. Thank you, Bill Dindel. Thank you, Max Parker. Thank you, Lanny Lehman. Thank you, Amy Mizell Flint. Thank you, Lupita Arroyo. Thank you, Dr. Taylor Kingman. Your unified dedication to every one of our students and SAISD staff members and commitment to making the best possible decisions is critically important to our community and the future of San Angelo. This has been made even more evident in these past years, where your guidance and intentional planning has helped provide resources in the midst of a water crisis to create early literacy and math initiatives to close achievement gaps that are facing schools across the state and across the nation, and to develop strong foundations of support for our students' hopes and dreams in a changing world. And you do all of this without pay for the role, often committing hundreds of hours each year of your personal time because you care. You care about our community, you care about our students, and you care about our staff. We hope you all enjoy the letters that you received from the SAISD elementary students that are a small token of our gratitude, but truly heartfelt words, and in some instances, artistic expressions. I want to share some of those words of gratitude from a few of your littlest fans. "Thank you for helping San Angelo ISD. You are the reason kids achieve their goals." "Thank you for being a really great person." That was Britten from Crockett Elementary. "Thanks for all you do. Here are ideas for school. Art kit for our classroom. Go to the beach on Friday." I kind of like that one. "And every student have a laptop," things that we see in place. Your friend Scarlett from Fort Concho Elementary. "We sincerely appreciate you volunteering your personal time to better our future. Thank you for being so very kind to us. I never knew what we would do without you. Thank you for your dedication to our community. We love our school board for caring for our hopes and dreams." That was Juliana from Lamar. "I love school and appreciate all that you do to make it fun. Thank you for serving on the board and making learning possible for me. Our schools are great because of people like you. Thank you for your service." And that was Aiden from Glenmore Elementary. At this time, SAISD would also like to present each of you with a special gift from our wonderful SAISD students. That is another expression of gratitude. Our career and technical education program, that your guidance has helped us to expand, again, to support individual hopes and dreams of our students, has an outstanding welding program, and some of the welding students created these wonderful pieces for you. We hope that they will serve as a reminder to you of just how incredibly appreciated you are and that you are truly making a difference, what we like to call SAISD difference makers. So at this time, if Dr. Detloff from the Board of Trustees, if each of y'all will come forward so we can provide you your gift and take a group photo. And you also have a card that shows a photo of some of the kiddos that worked on these special gifts. Give us just a minute, and we're going to get a photo, and then we'll let y'all get back to doing the good work that you do.
Thank you, Whitney, and thank you, Molly, and thanks to our central class for the gifts that they've made for us. And all the, each, what you guys don't see is each one of our board members, we have numerous cards and letters from our students, which we'll be able to take home and read. And I have a, looks like a full booklet of things from where I went to read at Fort Concho that I'll be looking at tonight. So we are honored when we're asked to come and help participate at something like this, like San Angelo Reads. We had all the board members that participated, I know, had a good time, just like I did. Also, wanted to, they're already gone, but I did want to thank the coaches at Lakeview for the wonderful job that they did. It was a tough year for the athletes, just trying to stay healthy, and they all, all through our district, all our athletes did well. We recognized Lakeview athletes this month and last month. We recognized the Central athletes. So with that said, let's move on with our agenda. We have, need to approve our minutes for December 6, 2021, at our special finance pre-agenda meeting, December 6, 2021 training, and our minutes for December 13, 2021, for our regular board meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Dindel and a second by Ms. Arroyo to approve this particular agenda item. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. All right, now this is the time that I told you, for anybody that wanted to make public comments for topics not on our agenda this meeting, we've had two persons that have signed up wanting to speak, Josh Harrison and Anna Harrison. I think you're the guys on the front row here, so whichever one wants to come forward, this is your opportunity.
I came here this evening because I am tired of the mask mandates from you guys. I was told on four or five different occasions this week that y'all don't require masks, and that's simply not true. You give me the choice, either I take my kid home or you guys are going to force them to wear a mask, and I don't agree with that. And also, I would like, at the same time, to call for Ms. Gomez, either resignation or to be terminated outright, because I, I mean, she was the only one that was willing to talk to me about it. Nobody would argue with me about it. Nope, you know, just, that's, that's our policy, and that's what we're going to do. And you guys have been told by the public that masks are not okay, but yet we still are running around with the words and making it to where you, y'all can just do whatever you want to do, and that's not okay. I was also told that you were following CDC guidelines, and you're not doing that either. Just plain and simple. The CDC guidelines call for everybody to be wearing a mask, period. You're not going to do that because that's already been shut down, so now you're going, going around. either resignation or to be terminated outright. Because, I mean, she was the only one that was willing to talk to me about it. Nobody would argue with me about it. Nope, you know, that's our policy and that's what we're gonna do. And you guys have been told by the public that masks are not okay, but yet we still are running around with the words and making it to where y'all can just do whatever you want to do, and that's not okay. I was also told that you were following CDC guidelines, and you're not doing that either. Just plain and simple. The CDC guidelines call for everybody to be wearing a mask, period. You're not gonna do that because that's already been shut down. So now you're going around, you know, the play on words and the dishonesty has... Like, I don't understand why I'm even having to be here. We've already told you guys, quit it with the masks, but you still wanna, you know, consistently keep it up. Like, I don't understand. Mike, if a kid wants to wear a mask, if their parents think that their kid should wear a mask, that's fine. If you wanna wear a mask, if, you know, anybody wants to wear a mask, I don't have a problem with that. But I choose not to wear a mask, and my kids choose... I have that say in my kids' life. I'm sorry that you do not have that say. And saying that you're following the CDC guidelines is a lie. Saying that you're following TEA guidelines is a lie. You're not following either one. You're picking and choosing what rules you want to enforce. You know, you word it differently from TEA, CDC, you know, all these different organizations that change their guidelines. You know, how many times has CDC changed their guidelines this year? Probably not very many, because we're only at the 18th, but last year. You know, how many times did CDC change their guidelines on mask mandates? Or, you know, everybody needs to get vaccinated. Or, you need to be vaccinated and wear a mask. Oh, no, you need to be vaccinated and wear two masks. You know, like, they never can make up their mind. You know, if we had a consistent guideline for everybody, then that's fine. Something that everybody can agree on, that's fine. But you don't have that.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. As I mentioned, we can't make any comments to your... Because of state laws, not on the agenda. But Ms. Harrison, do you want to speak also?
I'm short. Yes, as well. I agree with my husband. If there was a policy that was consistent, that everybody agreed with, that's what he said, I would be okay with it as well. But our children have chose not to. They know by us that they don't really work. Our kids don't like it. It's hot. They can't breathe. They consistently take it off themselves. We don't have to tell them. They do it themselves. So I don't think we, as parents, should have to choose between our children's health or their education. We agree. They should have that choice. They should be able to go to school, but not be required or forced to wear their mask. They should be able to be there and be able to learn at their comfortability. Is that a word? It may not be a word, but at their comfort level. They should be able to attend classes and not have to wear the mask.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Is there anyone else that didn't sign up that wants to give any public comment on a topic that's not on the agenda of this meeting? I see no one coming forward, so we'll go forward in our agenda. Our student enrollment report. Dr. McFarland?
It's our Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. The student enrollment report tonight is from Tuesday, January 4. That was the 17th Tuesday of the school year. That was the day we first reported back for the second semester. And that report showed that we have 6,357 elementary students, 3,192 middle school students, and 4,142 high school students. It gives us a total of 13,750 on that opening day of the second semester, which, when compared to the 17th Monday of last school year at this time, that number was lower by 217 comparative to last year. Any questions?
Is that running consistent?
Pretty consistent, because out of the report that we do every Monday now, and this was on a Tuesday, because we didn't have kids in school that Monday. The Monday report I saw from today got us at about 188 lower.
And is that... Are we still finding that most of the school districts, and especially West Texas, are all running at a deficit as compared to last year?
Running at a deficit and running at a lower, lower attendance rate. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. McFarland. Dr. Detloff? It's stated, "The campus review of evidence reports update on academic programs."
Yes, sir. Shelley Huddleston is going to kind of guide us through. We're so excited that we have our principals with us, who continue to do a magnificent job on the campus. As you will see in the next 30 minutes, focusing on student success and at the same time focusing on in-person learning and keeping kids in school, while, all the while, maintaining and trying to find their unique needs in a social and emotional setting as well. So as we've mentioned earlier, the last 21 months have certainly disrupted services as we've known it. But I just commend our principals for doing all they can to keeping student achievement and success at the forefront, and at the same time focusing on those unique needs to keep our learners in school in a secure and safe place as well. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Huddleston.
Good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. Tonight, we're privileged to have three of our outstanding elementary principals share with you just a brief glimpse of their campuses. There's no way that in a seven to eight-minute presentation they can really communicate all of the wonderful things that are happening every day on their campuses to help support the physical, emotional, social, and academic well-being of our students. But they're going to give you a brief snapshot of what they're all about. As part of these presentations, they'll be speaking about some programs and some data points that each of the campuses use to pinpoint individual academic progress of each student. Our campuses use this data daily in PLCs, that's their professional learning communities, to customize instruction so that each child has specific interventions or enrichment opportunities based on their own individual data. And because we want our constituents, if you're watching this online or you're here in the audience, we want you to be informed as well. So I thought before we started, we might just give you a brief overview of some of the data that you might see tonight. And we also realize that, just like other professions, we have a lot of education jargon and lingo that we use. So we just want to make sure that we make some of that clear. So first of all, all 17 of our elementary campuses assess our students at a minimum of three times a year using a reading assessment that's called the Next Steps in Guided Reading Assessment. We call it the NSGRA. These are reading levels, and they're graduated in alpha order, A to Z. So I gave you a little example on the chart. So here's what that would look like for kinder, first, and second grade students. So as you can see, every student, as they begin, the year they're assessed on a reading level. So in kindergarten in August, there's no assessment because we don't have a reading level in kindergarten. We're not expecting all of them to come in reading. That would be great if they did. But by about mid-November, February, we would hope that they would be on a reading level of A, B, or C. B would be they're headed toward meeting expectations. A is they're emerging, they're almost there. And then C would be they're exceeding expectations. So as we go along with the data, you're gonna have the campuses tell you that, you know, in first grade, at the beginning of the year, this percentage of students was on level. Well, that meant in first grade, they were reading at a C, a D, or an E, or above. That means to start out the year, this was their benchmark. And then, as you see, as you move through, when we do middle-of-the-year, MOY, assessment, that the target has moved up. So D would have been on level in August. We want to get them to D if they weren't there, but now it's moved up. And so E, F, and G would be on target. And it goes that way all the way through the grade levels. So just wanted you to have a little glimpse of what NSGRA meant and how we look at those reading benchmarks. Tonight, you also might hear these principals, and I think there's even a video clip of one student talking about LLI. LLI stands for Leveled Literacy Intervention, and it's our most intensive reading intervention for general education students. One of the decisions that we made this year was to shift some of our resources so that every single elementary campus had a full-time master teacher interventionist. So these teachers are able to spend their entire day pulling small group of students who need intensive intervention. And LLI is one of the intervention programs that we use for these intense intervention. And then you may also hear our principals talk about MAP testing. MAP stands for Measure of Academic Progress. It is a nationwide test that schools throughout the nation and throughout the state of Texas give. MAP has a wealth of data, and there's no way that we could adequately even pinpoint for you the kinds of data that you would get from MAP testing. What these principals may share with you is just an overall percentage of what we call projected proficiency. But there are so many other ways that we use MAP. And so this gives you an example. I don't really have a little pointer, but where you see the bar graph with the blue, that would be showing growth. And so if a principal was looking, for example, this is third, fourth, and fifth grade math, the little diamonds, that would be the projected growth we would want to see. So a principal could take a snapshot of a grade level and say, okay, third grade has exceeded growth. Fourth grade, we haven't quite gotten there. And fifth grade, we're right on level for growth. There's also a quadrant here that I think is a really great example of the way we use data, and that's talking about kids that are high achieving and high growth, or maybe they're high achieving, but they're making low growth. Or they're struggling, and they're not making growth, or they're struggling and they're making a lot of growth. So there's just all kinds of ways that our teachers and our principals are using this MAP data to make instructional decisions for kids. And there is so much more that I could share with you, coming specifically from things that they're gonna highlight on their campuses. But I hope maybe that just gave a brief overview of some of the things that you might see. And so you don't want to hear me talk. What you want to hear is these principals. So I'm gonna begin by asking Mr. Hubbard to come up. Clayton Hubbard is our principal at Crockett Elementary, and he's gonna be followed by Brooke Columbach, who is our principal at Austin. And then finally, Ms. Ginger Luther, who is the principal at Holloman. So take it away, Mr. Hubbard.
Hello, and happy School Board Appreciation Month. We really appreciate you guys. One thing that I don't know that everybody realizes all the time is we have an extremely supportive School Board. In fact, just earlier, I had one of y'all, several of y'all came up to me and asked me, what can we do? What's something we can do to help you all out? And that's genuine. We know you care about us, and we really, really do appreciate y'all. So today, again, I'm Clayton Hubbard. I'm the principal at Crockett. It's gonna be really hard for me to stand by this microphone the whole time because I'm so hyperactive, but that's okay. So just a little bit about Crockett. There's about 315 students at Crockett. That number is down, kind of following the trend that's happening statewide. You know, the mission of Crockett is to provide a safe, secure, and a rich learning environment that supports students to become successful members of the community. Our teachers really want to teach love and inspire the kiddos there. That's some demographics. If you take a look, we're about 66% economically disadvantaged this year. That number tends to trend upwards a little bit each year. So that's just kind of where the community's at. Before we get into the data, one thing, because we're gonna get in the weeds a little bit, so before we get too far down that road, I want you guys to understand that really at Crockett, and at all of these schools here in San Angelo, we consider the whole child. And so one of the things we talk about a lot is celebrating all the ways that students are smart. I'm gonna give you guys some data that talks about their academic growth, particularly in the areas of math and reading. But we do other things to provide them with exposure that they'll use later on in life. And so one of the things we do at Crockett, for example, is we have clubs. Those clubs occur throughout the semester. Every student at Crockett Elementary participates in a club. We have sports club, theater club, cooking club, makerspace, art, and STEM. Then at semester, they get a new club, and they take a deeper dive into something new. We also try to provide them with experiences. We're unique at Crockett, and we're right next to Angelo State University. So we get to do things like walk over to the planetarium. This year, we really hope that we get an opportunity to walk our kiddos over to the new museum. We already have had the chance to walk over and watch a basketball game, which we took our third through fifth graders, and just their eyes when they walk in the Janelle Center is pretty awesome. They also got to watch a volleyball game. And so just exposing them to that college setting, and then also providing them other experiences, not just really in the college arena, but we take them places where they can learn about things like agriculture and arts and sciences, and all kinds of fun stuff. Also, just, you know, one good thing about this year is we're starting to be able to have some more community involvement things, COVID allowing. And so we've been able to kind of open up the, you know, the area around the school and things like that, and have some parent involvement activities. We started a PTO this year from the ground up. So I just wanted to give a little shout out to my PTO parents, who are phenomenal and have already done so much for our school. Another thing we do is we celebrate everything we can about kids. And so each kid tracks, all the way down to kindergarten, tracks their individual goals. They also have class goals, grade level goals. We have pep rallies where we really praise kids for reaching those goals. We celebrate the most reading growth in a grade level. They raise a banner at the pep rally, and they get to wave that banner in their hallway throughout the next nine weeks. And then one other important thing we do at the pep rallies is give two students per class a Crockett MVP award. And that's a non-academic award. That award is really for leadership, for showing leadership qualities in areas, or in things like kindness, being safe, being respectful, being responsible, really being a leader in the classroom. And so those are just a few ways of many, many ways that we celebrate all the ways students are smart at Crockett. But I know you guys want to know about data. And so the first thing that we're gonna pull up is that NSGRA data. She talked about it a little bit. It stands for Next Steps to Guided Reading Assessment. And it scales students' reading levels on a pre-A to Z scale. Pre-A being, I'm learning my letters and sounds. Z is like eighth-grade reading level. If you take a look, there's a few columns on here. We have the beginning of the year, middle of year. I have average growth per student, and then that grade level expectation. In the beginning-of-the-year column, what we want to see is that, as you travel down that column, students, that percentage is getting higher as students are traveling through our grade levels. So in other words, the third grade should be higher than the second grade, should be higher than the first grade. So the longer you're at Crockett Elementary School, the higher that percentage of students that are on grade level is. And then if you look in the second column, that is our middle-of-the-year data. And so that data is important relative to the first column. So in first grade, for example, 35% of our students were on grade level at the beginning of the year. That number jumped to 48% by the middle of the year. So we're trending upward. And that's true for all of our grade levels. So second grade went from 45% to 51%. Third grade went from 53% to 62%. Fourth from 68% to 73%, and fifth from 63% to 66%. I added the other two columns just to give you an idea of what the expected student is supposed to grow in a school year or in one semester versus what they are growing at Crockett Elementary. And so we took the total number of students that had an opportunity for reading growth, and we divided that out by the total number of levels that were grown. And we got the average levels that each student grew. So what that means is the average student at Crockett Elementary grew about 2.6 reading levels over the first semester. In most grade levels, that expectation is only one reading level. So that is accelerated growth. And so how do we do that? Well, I'm glad that you asked. Okay, we do that with this fancy board right here. So this board is our NSGRA board. Every student in Crockett has a card on this board. And you can see across the top, it has the alphabet. And then they go under the corresponding letter to their reading level. Every grade is color-coded. So that's how we can see outliers. So for example, if there was a third grade... So for example, if there was a third grade, if third grade was the blue cards and you saw a blue card on the far left side of the board, we would know that's an outlier. That student needs intervention. And so we have to design some kind of intervention that would be appropriate. Similarly, if there were a cluster of blue cards on the left side, maybe under the H, you could say, that is a group of outliers. And that group of outliers, we could form an LLI group. So LLI is our Level Literacy Intervention Program. That is an accelerated program. It's highly regimented. And in about 10 lessons or so, you can move a group of kiddos from one reading level to the next reading level. So in 10 lessons for us, if we do that with fidelity, four out of five days a week, that means in about two and a half weeks, potentially, that group of kiddos could move a reading level. So that's super accelerated. Do they always do that all the time? No. So that's why we progress monitor. So we come back here in a few weeks, we take a look at that group and where they are. We get input from the interventionist or the instructional aide that's running the LLI. And then also the teachers. We redesign and we rebuild those groups. So while all of our students for that grade level are participating in clubs, I've got those teachers in this data room and we're rebuilding those groups every time. So that's how we use NSGRA. In the first semester, we had about 18 total groups. We were able to provide about 118 students with LLI. We moved a whole bunch of kids up that board. So it's super successful. The, the teachers really, really enjoy getting to run up there and grab that kid's card and move it over. That's a huge success for them. So that's LLI, I'm sorry, NSGRA. The next thing is called MAP. So that's a measure of academic progress. MAP, as she, as she talked about earlier, it has a wealth of information. So I can use that real macro view where I'm just taking a look at the school as a whole, or a grade level as a whole, or our individual class as a whole, all the way down to that micro view where you can figure out what individual objective an individual kid is struggling with in a subject area. So it has a whole lot of information. What you're looking at here is called the projected proficiency. And that projects a student out to how well they're going to achieve at the end of the school year. So this is from August. So let me give you an example. In the third grade, it says the total percentage of approaches that are projected to be approaches, grade level and above is 51.8%. And so what that means is that we have an opportunity to intervene and disrupt that projection. So we, we can recognize there's an area of need there. So that's 51.8%. That's not acceptable. And so we will design intervention groups to disrupt that projection so that a way we can intervene and, and change, and change students. So the way we do that is similar to how we do NSGRA. So here's our board for that. So you saw those quadrants earlier that talk about high achieving students that are showing low growth. So that's something the state of Texas holds us accountable for. In other words, just because it's really not just about getting students to pass the STAR test at the end of the year. It's about getting every student to grow no matter where they are. And so we have three different, we have a whole bunch of boxes here. Those, that row of boxes at the bottom, that would be students that are projected to fail the STAR test at the end of the year. So that projected proficiency, proficiency is below approaches grade level. And then in each one moving up, you have approaches, meets, and masters. And while you, and within those boxes, we have three columns. The students on the left column in the box are projected to do lower, to score lower than they did the year before. And so that's how we keep track of those kids in the in-between that may be high achieving. So they're doing well in class. But we don't, what we don't know is they're still underperforming for their individual status. And so we, we really use this board a lot more in this semester of school. We're heavily focused on literacy in the first semester. And during this semester, we're really going to be pulling those intervention groups. And the intervention, the, the style of intervention that we use for this is small group instruction in the classroom, LLI, math intervention, and then also after-school tutorials. So this, in the spring, we get actually, we get busing for after-school tutorials, which is phenomenal. So that's what we use that for. And really, this is my last slide, but I just want to tell you, I want to reiterate again. I've given you guys just like this surface level view of what my teachers and I, who are super qualified and highly intelligent people, talk about when we enter this data room and we get down to business. But on a broader scale, and a more important scale, what we're really proud of at Crockett is the relationships that we build with kids and the love for learning that we foster within the kids at Crockett. So thank you all so much. And if you guys have any questions, then I'll be more than happy to answer.
Any questions, board members? Go ahead. All right, you did, thank you, Mr. Hubbard. It was very comprehensive. We're, we're learning. And we appreciate you being here. We had, last week was our first time to be exposed to some of this. So you clarified some of the questions that I had from last week. And I'm, I'm trying to become a better board member. I know we have given, you know, we, we provide a lot of money for, to provide various tools for you guys to utilize. And and sometimes that's all we see. And we don't know, one, what those tools really are, except they're things that y'all have asked for. And we don't know how they're being utilized. And we don't know if they're being successful. And we don't know if you guys need more. So by you coming here, and this is the first time since I've been on the board that we, and that's been 17 years, I guess, that we've had, asked principals to come in and discuss these things with us. This is our first time to get to hear from you guys that are on the front lines and what's going on. So I know I'll speak for all the board members that we want you to have the tools that you need to help your kids be successful academically, as well as achieve their hopes and dreams. And we want your comments of whether we're giving you the correct tools and, and if you need other tools. So thank you. I know Ms. Luther will be coming up also in a minute, but I'll say ahead of time, we thank you guys for being here and we thank you for all you do.
We appreciate all of you taking the time. It's really an honor to be here and share with you about our schools. We could talk about our school all day long. So it's hard to squeeze that into just a few minutes. But I want to give you just a glimpse into Austin Elementary and who we are and what we're about. This is the 92nd year for Austin Elementary to serve San Angelo. So a long history of success at Austin. Almost every time I speak in the community about where I work, someone says, oh, I was an Austin Bulldog. Or they know someone who was an Austin Bulldog. So a long history there. But as we started evaluating where, where we were going about two years ago, we realized that we did not have a clear vision for that. So part of our process the last two years has been to really ask that question. Where are we going? What's our purpose for being here? So we put together a team of people. We surveyed our parents through Panorama, which is something that the district does. We also talked to our students about their hopes and dreams and what do they want for themselves. We talked to our staff members. And then we had a team of people come together to craft a vision for our campus. And we landed on the vision of empower to learn, empower to lead. And I want to share with you the definition of the word empower because I think it makes it really clear what we're hoping for. So empower means to make someone stronger and more competent, especially in controlling their life and claiming their rights. That's what we want for our students at Austin. In fact, that's what we want for ourselves. Everyone should be empowered to learn and empowered to lead. So everything we do aligns with this vision. We use that as our measuring stick. Are we doing that? Does it align with the vision? Our guidelines for success are really important also at Austin. Be safe, be kind, be ready to learn. Our kiddos learn those things right from kindergarten. They can tell you, what do you need to know about Austin? Be safe, be kind, be ready to learn. Any conversation we have with a student, we refer to those guidelines for success. So that is who we are. Now the question became, well, how do we do that? How do we empower our students to lead and to learn? So this school year's project or task was to work collaboratively as a staff to develop our goals. They align with the district goals and the pillars. And it was, how are we going to hold ourselves accountable for that? What are we going to do for student achievement? What do we expect for community relationships? How will we keep a safe environment for our students? So our campus is working through, we've developed these goals for ourselves. We're working through a process of what will we start? What will we stop? What will we continue that matches these campus goals? So we're excited about that. And then the question becomes, okay, we, we know what we want, how we're going to do it, but what evidence do we have? So I'm going to share a little bit of evidence with you today about student achievement to start us off. And then I'll share with you some highlights and some pictures of other ways we're meeting these goals. This is our Next Steps Guided Reading data. It gives us the information that Mr. Hubbard shared and Ms. Huddleston about reading levels for students. I chose to present it to you in a historical format so that you can see where we were in 2018, 2019, and where we are today. That middle of year data for this school year is just recent, as of last week. So if you look at it historically, you can follow a color of students. So if I look at the orange box in kindergarten, I can follow those orange boxes all the way up. And those are our current third graders. So you can see in kindergarten, 43% of them at the end of the year were reading on grade level. Currently, middle of the year, as third graders, 76% of them are reading on grade level. I think that's so exciting for us. We're adding value to students. When you look historically, you can see other patterns as well. I'll just point out one that we are working on, that we add, asked ourselves a lot of questions about. If I look at my kindergarten in the green box for end of year last year, one of our huge celebrations was that 71% of our kindergartners were reading on a Level D at grade level at the end of last year. That is huge for us. We were so excited about that. But when they came back as first graders, at the beginning of the year in August, only 28% of them scored reading on grade level. So that made us wonder what happened. We started asking questions about that because it's a gap. And we, we landed on several answers. There's so many factors. One factor was that our virtual students from the year before were now here in person and were factored into this assessment. And many of them are behind. Some of those students that are factored into the 28% weren't even part of a virtual school program. They just were at home. So it's really their first school exposure. Mobility is another issue that plays in lots of factors. But that 28%, if you look, certainly it got our attention. It devoted a lot of our resources towards first grade for this first semester. And you can see their huge growth now. Currently, 45% of those students are reading on grade level. So our first grade teachers with their guided reading small groups that they pull, they worked with a scholastic coach to make sure we're doing the right things for students as well. And our LLI program, our Level Literacy Intervention, also made a big difference in first grade. Just some other things, the only, if you look at our current middle of year, you'll notice that our fourth grade declined from 73% to 70%. When you factor that down to how many kids are in that grade level, it means one student didn't make that little marginal bit of progress. So we'll figure out who that is and, and work that intervention towards them. But overall, great progress by our students. Here's one thing that's interesting about our MAP data. We give those two nationally normed tests, the NSGRA assessment and MAP in reading. One thing that's fantastic for us, adds validity to me, is that those numbers that are on grade level are almost identical between the two assessments. So for example, if you look at third grade, the total percent approaches or above grade level is 64.7. On the other assessment, I believe it put us at 62% reading. So they're just almost matching. That says we've got some really great assessments that we're giving when things match. And if you look at our reading, you can see our students are doing fairly well. We've got room to grow and we always want to add value to students. But, but we're making progress there. Our math numbers, if you look at the green piece of the pie, those students, 19% of our students in third, fourth, and fifth grade are at that meets level, which is very exciting for us. But, but the masters percent is very low. So it just means we want to try to slide those students up a level to increase that. Okay? These are some of our other points of pride. I just want to tell you a little bit about our campus. If you'll notice in the top right-hand corner, we have what we call High Five Fridays that we have started this school year. Those are on Friday because we noticed a decline in our attendance rate on Fridays. So we thought, we're going to make this way more fun to be here on a Friday. You don't want to miss this. So we cranked the music up and we ordered 70 foam hands. And we high-five every student as they get out of the car on Friday mornings. You can see we had some police officers join us one Friday. We're looking for community groups that want to come be a part of that, just to make it exciting for students to come to school. So if you're interested in the High Five Friday, let me know. We'd be glad to have you and host you for that. You can see the picture that says SWABOT. That SWABOT stands for Students Will Be Able To. It's in every classroom. We have learning targets and success criteria for all of our lessons. Our students, part of that roadmap of how are we going to get there is giving students voice. They need to know what it is, am I, what am I supposed to be learning? And how will I know when I've got it? So that's just an example from our classroom. The learning check is an example from a fourth grade classroom. Our third, fourth, and fifth grade ELAR teachers work together really closely to develop those. They were no longer willing to accept multiple choice. They said, we can't see the depth of the understanding unless a student explains it to us or writes it. So our assessments are much deeper. We now know if a student gets it because they're writing that whole explanation for us. The, the top picture is our little library. It's what we call it. It's a community library out in front of the school. That is a big component in reaching one of those goals to meet the needs of San Angelo reads. It was started through that project and continuing literacy and having it reach out to the community. So if you've got books to donate, we take those. Our fourth graders run the little library and fill it for us and keep it filled. Our book vending machine is new for us this year. It's one of the ways that we celebrate goals. And if you accomplish a goal, you get to go in a drawing to get a token for the book vending machine. You also get a book on your birthday. It's a great way to celebrate kids. Our top dog is something, I think Mr. Hubbard mentioned, they do something similar at Crockett. But we celebrate students. It's a character award. It's given to a student in each classroom each nine weeks for showing those guidelines for success. How did you show you were safe, kind, and ready to learn? You get a sign in your yard to honor you for that nine weeks. So it's very exciting. The last picture I put on there because I want to just explain, kids are, there's so much more to, to schooling kids and raising kids in this community. And I know our community values that. The little boy with the Nike backpack is having a rough morning, crying, getting out of the car, didn't want to go in. He was having a moment. His friend was in the car behind him. She jumps out, runs up to him. These are first graders. Runs up to him and says, are you okay? And he looked at her and then as soon as I snapped that picture, she took his hand and walked him inside and said, let's go, we have work to do. She's on it. That, to me, that's a top dog right there. She was caring and thinking outside herself as a six-year-old. And that's how you empower a kid too. The last thing is a video, a student story. This is Jayla. And Jayla's going to give you a little information about her journey with reading and the process at Austin.
Well, I didn't like reading at first because I always felt like I was going to get judged because I didn't know anything at all. So like every time, like we would try to get called, like she would call on people to read. I would just like sit back. I wouldn't want to be called on. And then in my, in fourth grade, when I had my LLI class and in third, that helped me a lot, but I don't know, I still felt like I wasn't good enough at reading and that everyone else was better. So I just didn't like it. And then in fourth grade, when I had Ms. Garhado, she really helped me because I would also have LLI class, but I still, like she would still pull me aside and help me. And like we really just like walked through it slow, slower than the other teachers, I guess. I don't know. And I just liked that. And then Ms. Kinslow, she like, she talks with us, like she sits down, like just talks with us to listen to how we're feeling about our reading and stuff.
And now how do you feel about reading?
I like reading. I'm confident now.
Get on her face, the confidence. She, she made a year's worth of growth last year, being in the Level Literacy Intervention and her reading class. So she got two classes worth. And Jayla has made a full year's growth already this semester. She is currently reading on grade level, Level T as a fifth grader. And her words, y'all, I'm confident. That's why we do what we do. That's why we do what we do. That's how we empower kids. So thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, Ms. Cullenbach. I assume no one had questions.
Good evening. And yes, just as both of the other principals talked about, we could talk about our school for hours. So it was hard to decide what to talk about, but I would invite, and as I know the others, I would invite any of you to come and see our data and be able to actually look at it in person and let us have those conversations with you. So I welcome that anytime because it is hard to put it into this short amount of time. But at Holloman, we chose, as we talked about our vision and our mission statement, we chose to utilize the SAISD vision and mission because we felt like we are united as part of that. So we didn't choose to change that, but what we did do is we came up with what we believe at Holloman, and this was a really unique thing that we did. I had my staff members think about their initials, and then I said, I want you to think of a word that describes Holloman using your first and your last initial. And so we put all of those words out, and then we created from those words our belief statement. And so it was relationships are the foundation. So we have created a nurturing community that surrounds staff, students, and our families with a genuine, affirming, loving environment where everyone feels a sense of belonging. All children can learn, therefore we are dedicated to providing an engaging, robust education that supports the unique needs of every learner and develops a yearning for excellence. And so that's a lot of words, but it's a very meaningful group of words. And so that was our belief statement. And then we also have the Holloman Creed that we do every day on announcements. And I encourage kids, I say, you know, make today, you know, a day that you're going to live by this creed so that you can have a great day. And so you can see the creed there, but we really, we value that, and I can tell you, my kindergartners can recite that, just like they do the pledges. So it's really cool to hear that in the mornings. We do that on announcements if you're ever out and about. On the points of pride, I wanted to kind of talk about that first. So we have been a Capturing Kids' Hearts Showcase School for three years in a row, and definitely counting on that to happen for four years in a row. We really take pride in those relationships, and you're going to see a video later of a couple of the kiddos talking about parts of being a Capturing Kids' Hearts campus. We also have clubs, similar to what Clayton talked about. Ours are after-school clubs, and so kids choose the club they want to be in, and then I have teachers be sponsors for those. So it really, again, builds those relationships, but also allows students to show their smartness. Just a few of the clubs we have are Art, STEM, Chess, Cheer, Spirit. A club that we've had going for, I guess about three years now, is our Garden Club. If you ever come to Holloman, it started out as an outdoor classroom, and now it has transformed into outdoor classroom slash garden. We had an opportunity back in October to actually have a sale of things that were canned and actually sell our produce to put money back into the Garden Club. And the kids thought that was really awesome, and we made it like a grocery store, so it was a learning opportunity. We also are the GT Magnet School for the North Side. Our classes happen each Thursday, and again, you're going to hear from one of our first-grade students of how excited they are to get to go to TRIZ every Thursday. This year, we actually have twenty-four, I believe, that come from the different schools, and is really an incredible experience. We do have incentives that we provide for both behavior and reading rewards, and those incentives are things that our students had a part in choosing what they wanted. So some of those opportunities that we've given them were a glow stick dance party. They, you know, everybody gets glow sticks, and you get in the dark and you dance. We have a color run coming up this next semester. We've done crafts, so they have great opportunities if they do what they need to do. We have Positive Panthers, that was the character traits. I know some have talked about the social-emotional part. We do monthly where we recognize those students that are exemplifying those characteristics. Our Citizenship Award, like theirs, was Crockett MVP, and I know Austin had one, too. We call it Proud Panthers, and we recognize those citizenship students, not necessarily academic. We do a Smarty Panther Pride Board where teachers post work in the hallway, and then I go around and I take the work, and I leave a note that says, Ms. Luther was so impressed with your work that she stole it for the pride board. And then they get called up and get their picture made and get a Smarty. We have a brag board, and this was two-fold. When we learned about it, it was to use for students, and it was just so that you can make sure that you're recognizing and you're bragging on kids in your class. Well, I turned that and said, well, let's brag on teachers. And you fill up a hundreds chart, and teachers just go and give each other brags, and then guess what? They earn rewards, too. And it's funny, because one week I didn't put a reward up there, we didn't fill the brag board that week. So teachers are just like kids. They want those rewards tied to things, too. So those are just a few of the things. Again, we know how important affirmations are for both staff and students. So that's a little bit, a few of the points of pride. As we get into the data, both, the MAP data is what I have on there first, and you can just click it twice, you can do it once or twice. We are, we are growing at Holloman, which is, that is our focus. And I know both Mr. Hubbard and Ms. Cullenbach gave you detailed explanations of what each of these things mean. We are growing, but we are continuing to work on the rate that we're growing. One of the things that, you know, the gap is so significant that, yes, our kids are, what I would consider, they're high-growth, but that gap was so big that it's taking us so long to get to that grade-level expectation. And so that intervention through using the Level Literacy Intervention, our special education kids are being able to utilize reading by design. And then we have just some master teachers that are able to work through, do the math for the math intervention. And so our kids are definitely growing, and you can see that our third graders have made huge shifts from second grade to third grade, especially looking at their MAP data. And so we're going to continue to look carefully at those students and continue to make adjustments in our interventions to be sure that we meet those needs. So that was, you can click it one more time, I think. Yeah. As far as our MAP data, the reports, the different reports that we use, I know some of these Ms. Huddleston put up there at the beginning, but MAP data at Holloman is really our main focus for how we're going to group our students and what the teachers are going to do with that. It's a lengthy process of, we look at all of these different reports, and then we take what we have already taught, and we look to see how many kids are still struggling with that. And that's where we go back to what's called a learning continuum that comes with the MAP data that tells us exactly what teaks that the students need to learn. And so with all of these reports that you see here for the MAP data, we utilize all those, and we sit down with a group, and this is something that I would be happy, as we work in our professional learning communities, for someone to sit down, because that's actually how you're going to be able to process how the different reports go together and make those connections for you. But we are, we're definitely showing growth. We're excited about the progress that we're made, that's being made. We did our science map testing on Friday, and we had students that grew twenty points. We had students that grew ten, fifteen. So the science teacher was definitely on cloud nine. So that was exciting. I hope that that is the trend as we continue to look at our MAP data. The next slide is the Next Steps to Guided Reading Assessment. One more. That's okay. Yeah. And that one, again, you know, as Mr. Hubbard, they talked about beginning of the year and middle of the year, you can see that those numbers are trending up. Some are trending up more than others, and again, those are conversations that we look at, why are we only growing one percentage point? Or why are we, you know, how did we grow, you know, ten percentage points? And some of that is definitely absences. Some of it are, we look at those kiddos that haven't been able to be here because of COVID or just whatever reason, and those kids are going backwards. And so just us figuring out how to make up time lost in addition to just staying on track. So again, definitely making growth, but, you know, we're never satisfied, so we want that, that growth to continue. Another area that I want to talk about is Holloman is an Inspire campus. So we have the Inspire program on our campus, and it is an intensive behavior program that we have, that in addition to the program, we gain two special education teachers and one aide. Well, through that program, not only have we been able to have success with our Inspire students, but we have implemented Tier Two Behavior Intervention. And the goal with this is that we can utilize our instructional aides, we can utilize our Inspire teachers and aides to actually look at data on students who are not being successful due to behavior, and then we can implement social skills with those kids. We can do check-ins and check-outs with those kiddos and track data to see exactly where the time of day is a struggle for them, and then we can push in support. So this probably is one of the things that we are the most proud of this year, because you guys know that if, if those needs, Maslow needs are not met, or if we're having those behavior issues but we don't know why, they can't perform academically. So this has been huge for us, and we have definitely seen a lot of success. And this is something else that, again, if you would like more information on, I would be happy to share that with you. Last, just a picture of our data room that we utilize. Every grade level has their MAP data posted and their Next Steps to Guided Reading posted, and as they talked about, we move kids. We move kids to the different quadrants as they move, hopefully, forward. But if they don't, as soon as we're moving, we're also talking about what we're going to do for that student. And so we do this during our professional learning community, which is on a bi-weekly rotation basis. We review all the data that we're looking at, and then we collaborate with each other so that we can make sure and gather all the ideas that each other may have to offer. And then, of course, intervention groups are created and adjusted based on that data. So, and then I just, to, one of the things that I will say is, it's both a very positive thing that you guys were able to give us, the intervention teachers this year. I will say that has been a huge blessing, and we have been able to intervene with many students. The constraint is that because of the gap, we need more. Like, there's just, there's not enough personnel, people, to meet the needs of the students that we have right now trying to close that significant gap. So it's a great thing, and I'm very grateful, but, you know, you can never have enough human help. So that would be what I would say, the constraint is just that we need more. But thank you for what you have offered. And then I will end with a student video that I think will brighten everybody's night.
What I like about Holloman is the people here are very kind staff and students. One of the, I love lots of good things about Holloman. One is that their teachers are very nice. They serve very good lunches. It's a very safe school, very educational, and I think it has the right amount of kids. And I love Ms. Luther because she's the best principal I've ever had.
I joined the drama club, and what I liked about it is that I could perform for the whole school, and I also got to be the main character, and I had a fun time in it.
The reason why I love good things is that because I like how people share their good things because I did this, I did that, and I just think it's pretty cool that they get to like do all that.
My favorite part of Holloman is reading and learning when he comes in, and my favorite reward was getting to go to the dance party.
What I like about TRIZ is that we do fun projects.
Thank you all. Any questions?
Test, test, there we go. Any questions for Ms. Luther?
No, I would just echo what you said earlier. I just thank all three of you all for coming and being willing to kind of explain your data. Like Max was saying earlier, we, we understand that y'all are dealing with a very difficult situation with some of it being the fact that we had kids out of school for three months, some of it being virtual school last year, a whole host of things, absences this year, et cetera. And we just appreciate all of the hard work y'all are doing, and your staff are doing on behalf of Los Angeles students. And then we appreciate y'all coming here and talking with us about what y'all are doing and what we can do to help you more. So thank you.
And I would like to congratulate Ms. Luther because she's the only one that's actually outlined a specific need that we have. So, so thank you for bringing that forward.
Might be because I've been around a while, and I know when y'all say ask, you ask.
That's right. Thank you.
Well, and I'll just say this for the people that are watching this, and I'll tell these principals, we would love to get you more teachers to help you. We can't find teachers. And so just as a public address announcement here, anybody watching moms, dads have children in school, or anyone that knows teachers, we need teachers. There's going to be, there is, and there's going to continue to be a shortage. You can tell by these principals, it's a great place to work. We've got great kids, and we want you, and if we can find more teachers, we'll get you more teachers. Just a question, how are you doing right now with your teachers? I know we're having a lot of teachers out, but are, is it affecting? I know it must, it's got to be affecting you, not just, here you're trying to get your kids up to grade level, you're trying to do all these things. One, you're hoping your kids can show up, but then if you don't have teachers that are trained to be able to do this because your teachers are out, and you don't have, I know some of you don't have substitutes, I'm sure some of you are in, some of you principals are having to be in the classroom yourself, but I ask a question, I'm giving a statement. But I guess I'll just end that because I know where you are, and again, with all the stress and anxiety you have, just trying to keep up with all the things that you've outlined, you're trying to keep up, now you, your levels just go up even more when you don't have teachers there. And so I appreciate all you're doing. Again, keep asking, and yes, we're going to try to find you more teachers, more interventionists or whatever you call it. We'll get, if we can find them, we'll get them for you. We know that that's what you need, but if there's other things you need, let us know that also. We really mean that sincerely. Okay? Thank you, guys, for showing up. Appreciate it.
Max, and one more thing, it reminds me of, you know, we had a public relations campaign several years ago that we still refer to a lot as our people make the difference, and I want the three of y'all to know how much difference y'all make. So thank y'all for being a part of changing children's lives on a daily basis. We appreciate that very much.
And as they're transitioning out, Mr. Parker, I just want to add that, you know, you've seen three learning heroes this evening, and they've certainly caused this superintendent to beam with pride. So I just thank our board and our principals and all of our classroom teachers and staff for all they're doing to, to keep student success in many areas at the forefront.
I'll tell you what we're going to do. This may be a good time to take a, just a short break while they're leaving, and we don't have much more on our agenda, but why don't we take a break for about five or ten minutes, and we'll be back. Let's go back on the record. We've just got a few more things we need to address tonight. I don't know if Dr. Detluff, you had anything on partnership with Good Fellow Air Force Base, or whether we're ready to go and do the report on air purification projects?
Yes, sir, Mr. Parker. Just a report that we previously mentioned in our pre-agenda meeting. We just want to continue to embrace our partnership with Good Fellow Air Force Base. Teresa Goodwin, our school liaison, who's with us tonight in every board meeting, recently participated with us developing our action steps to our participated with us developing our action steps to our new board goals that we will be adopting and implementing next month at your discretion. Those board goals are student engagement, culture and communication, and innovative learning spaces in Good Fellow Air Force Base. And Teresa, our school liaison, were a huge partners in helping us with that. So those partnerships are alive and well, and we just thank Ms. Goodwin for her participation and involvement.
One day we're going to have you come up the front. We're going to introduce you and we're going to have you come all the way around so we can all shake your hand, okay? Thanks for being here, Teresa. All right, Dr. McFarland, you're up again on our Jason, whoever's going to speak on air purifying products.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. I've been tasked by Dr. McFarland and Dr. Detloff to discuss air purification products. What I've done is I've divided this, I gave everybody a handout on the research that we've done and I've divided this into three major, three main topics. Short-term products that we could get a hold of it very quickly and put into, into work. Long-term items that would take some time to get implemented and then possible cleaning solutions. The short-term products that I've found, I don't know if any of y'all saw the articles that came out about Ector County last, last week about their air purifiers that they got. They, they bought 3,500 Medify air purifiers. I reached out to the executive director of operations and talked to him about the product that they bought. That's one of the, one of the items. All these items that I have on here all kill COVID or take it out of the air in some way, shape, or form. The Medify one is a, it's a extreme H13 true HEPA filter. The one thing that I've noticed about some of these devices is as the price point goes down, they have consumables that then have to be replaced a little more often. So I'm looking at not only initial costs, but also costs beyond the initial purchase and what we're going to have to do to maintain these units to make sure that they work properly once they're in the classroom. I mentioned the well-air airborne infection control devices as well last week. And then I also have looked into Fellow's air purifiers. Some of these are wall hung units. Some of them are just units that you plug in and set next to your desk. As far as the long-term products, we've discussed retrofitting air handlers in the schools with different air purification technologies. The one that E3 has pushed the most is needlepoint bipolar ionization. These are, these are items that would be added into the air handlers and then as the air goes through the HVA system, it would purify the air and send it out through our current duct systems. I've also, I also researched global plasma solutions. They go by GPS manufacturers and they also, they manufacture the actual needlepoint bipolar ionization machines. The thing with, that makes this a more of a long-term goal is we would have to get a, get a company on board and then have them engineer it per specific schools. I have E3 looking at, they have plans for several of our schools due to the projects that they have done with us. So what I asked Clip, the president of E3, to do is to take one of those and go through it and go ahead and give me a price that if we were going to do whichever school he picked, how much is that going to be? And then I was going to, what I plan on doing, I talked to him, is figuring up an average ballpark per square foot of what it would cost to do other schools. A couple other, the last one was possible cleaning solutions. I'm always looking for something that we can do more with less. And right now is one of those situations that I think probably are, one of our biggest things that we run into is labor right now and getting, you know, just like the teachers, having shortages of teachers. We also have a huge shortage of people who want to work in the custodial department. And this was a, this was kind of an idea that over Thanksgiving, I was talking to my brother and I was mentioning our sprayers that we use spraying classrooms. And he had mentioned in the hospital where he works that they use a UVC machine that they would roll into, Dr. Kingman might have seen some of these at Shannon. They roll them into different operating rooms and they plug them in and turn them on and it zaps everything in the room to make it a sterile environment. I've got three of them here listed. The last one that I have listed on here, it was kind of funny, Dr. McFarland and I were talking about it and I said, it would be nice if we could find a robot that would just go down the hallways and into the classrooms. Well, I, I found one on the bottom. If you look long enough on the internet, you can find just about anything. These are definitely all viable avenues that we could take. All of them have major backing from different research universities and, and different independent research labs as well. Do you guys have any questions over any of these products?
I'm looking to Dr. Kingman. He's kind of my mentor on this and he and, he and Mr. Dindell, I know, did quite a bit of study on this when we were at the school board convention. And so I defer to any questions they might have. And while they're thinking of questions, why don't you, since this is being televised, you mentioned how many, what we've already done, I think that the audience needs to be, have their, be refreshed on what we are doing because we bought a lot of products or several products, what, right, beginning of August or July, August, September?
Yes, we bought 35 IVP, well, we have 42 total IVP units, large venue units that can clean the area in a large venue such as the, a large library. We've put them in the cafeterias and all the gym, all the gyms in the district, or all the secondary gyms, received them. And these units can clean up to 6,000 square feet of air in one hour. So every hour it's turning over the air. There's 35 of them currently. We're waiting for seven more. And then we also bought five smaller units that we're waiting that would be more of a classroom unit that are real portable that go into any classroom.
Right. Any, I know we had asked, you know, to, for you to get us this information, and I appreciate it. And I'm looking whether Bill or Taylor have any other questions.
Jason, as we, as we move forward, again, I think the board's goal is to maybe create a long-term plan. We can, we can, we can throw stopgap measures at almost anything, but it, by the time we retrofit, get these products on board, that crisis may have passed already. And so as we move forward, again, I think it's the, the board's directive that rather than just putting a rubber stamp on something and putting something out there that's, may or may not be effective, we really want to, again, stay on top of this, but in, in, just move forward as we can to create a safer environment for the kids, a healthier environment somehow. But again, just, again, some of these, some of these things, these HEPA filters and stuff like that are not truly as effective as we see in long-term. And plus, you know, as we study the odd generation in some of these AC units, the air circulation may not be fast enough to actually stop a virus in a classroom or for a period of time if the, if the AC doesn't run. So really struggling with how we, how we move forward, but I mean, again, searching for long-term solutions. And then also, just as a matter of point, went to awards assembly at Lakeview the other night and they had their IVP unit running in the gymnasium where we were at because that was the most concentration of people in the building at the time. And they, they were, the principal was telling me that they moved those, that unit around for concentrations of people during the day. And that's what they're trying to filter areas for the, for the, for the, the area of the school where they see the most concentration of people is where they put that unit in. So it's, the portable unit seems to be working over time because they're not, it's not stationary. It's moving where people are at, not just in a, in a room by itself. So I thought that was an interesting, interesting point that they've already made some adjustments to that unit because we thought we might, we might see that unit in one place stationary all day, but it's not stationary. They're, they're moving it around where again, concentrations of people are in the building to help, try to, to filter that air in that space. Interesting point that they're working on.
And I, you know, I don't really have anything other than the fact that I think as we look forward with all of this, we're looking at things that, you know, keep kids in classrooms and keep attendance rates up, not necessarily in response to a COVID surge or any other thing. And as we move forward in anything we do in the future, I think we have to look it through it with that lens, but I agree with Mr. Dindell. I think putting stopgap in is not necessarily the most judicious way to handle our school financing and, or even this, any of these virus outbreaks. So I think as we move forward, you know, with any project, we have to look at how things we are doing can help improve attendance rates, but I think that's kind of more the road that I would like to go long-term than just go and moving forward in response to each thing, so.
Anyone else? Well, thank you, Jason, and thank you, Dr. McFarland, for getting us that information and, and, and let us know when you get that other information from E3 and that'll give us another idea of cost, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, Max, certainly we need to have a, even though it's not a primary focus, we still need to have a focus on what it's going to cost in order to implement, you know, each one of these strategies. So if we're doing something long-term, when, when we're looking at long-term, I'm assuming there's significant cost in those, your proposals long-term, but when you look at cleaning solutions in short-term, you know, I'm not sure what those, you know, what that might cost. So certainly a possible cleaning solution might accomplish what Dr. Kingman's talking about. If, if our classrooms are cleaner, then long-term, we might have less absences as a result of that. So I don't know what that cost might be, but it seems to me like those might be, at least in the short-term, those might be something that we would consider rather than re-engineering all of our HVAC systems.
Right. These, the cleaning solutions, the last one, the Ally Express, it was, list price was 17.5 machines. The good thing about it though is it does run by itself, recharge, it goes back to its base station, recharge itself and then it'll go back out. The short-term ones range from $300 all the way up to $24. The Zeon Zap Robot, I talked to the guy there, I'm waiting for a, for a quote back from him, but I think it's six and eight.
Machine. Okay, we now have our consent items. We have A through E. A is consider donations. B, consider cooperative purchasing organizations. C, consider bid number 20 hyphen zero two six miscellaneous supplies. Consider bid, that's D, consider bid number 20 hyphen zero one four curriculum and instructional materials. And E, consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel. Do we have anybody? I didn't even check. I'm looking at Farah.
Your honor, if you'd know, but can you just say one thing?
Yes, Dr. Kamaz.
I, I just think it's important to add because we were talking about teacher shortages. In the last two weeks, we have filled 13 vacancies. So while we are experiencing a shortage, we have been able to fill 13 positions. So we've, we've brought you 13.
That's a miracle right there. So thank you, Dr. Kamaz, good job.
So there's five for you this evening.
All right, so there is five, so we do need to consider it.
Yes, but there wasn't an addendum. We were hoping we might have had one more for you this evening.
But they're in the packet, so.
Yes.
So we do need to consider superintendent's recommendation personnel for school year 2021, 2022. These are all items that we discussed last week. We put them on the consent item on our agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve consent items A through E.
Second. All right, there's been a motion by Lanny Lehman and a second by Dr. Kingman. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comments on this? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Dr. McFarland, consider approval of 2020, 2021 audit report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Parker. As you well know, according to Texas Education Code as well as CFC Legal Policy Board is required to have its financial accounts audited once annually at the end of every fiscal year. And that report is going to be provided for you here tonight from, we also contract with Id Bailey to do that audit for us. And tonight we have Kevin Randolph here from Id Bailey to, to give that report and he'll be able to give you highlights from the audit from this past year as well as answer any questions that you may.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Randolph. I just found out he is, the companies that he works for is in Abilene, but Kevin lives in Comanche, which is my hometown. And so he'll be driving back to Comanche, Texas tonight, which is 125 miles, takes about two, two, two and a half hours. I've made that drive many times. So I appreciate you being here, Kevin. Sorry you had to wait.
Glad to be here. Thank you for having me here. My name is Kevin Randolph and as Dr. McFarland said, I'm with Id Bailey. And our firm conducted the district's financial statement audit for the fiscal period ended August 31, 2020. I'm here to present that audit. Be glad to answer any questions after. I've got a presentation up on the screen for you that I'm going to go through now. First, I'd like to go over the auditor's opinion, which is the purpose of getting an audit is for us to give you our opinion on your financial statements. I'd like to point out that management of the district is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation, including the internal controls, accounting. Our responsibility is to issue an opinion on those financial statements. This year, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the same opinion we issued last year. That's the opinion you want to get. That means that we found that your financial statements were consistent with generally accepted accounting principles. We also had no issues or findings this year, so a good, clean audit. I'm going to go through the numbers briefly. This is the statement of net position. This is a balance sheet. This takes a comprehensive government-wide view of the district and includes long-term assets such as land, buildings, and equipment. It also includes long-term liabilities such as your bonds payable, your net pension liability, and your TRS care liability for Heart and Healthcare. As you can see, assets were consistent from year to year. They were 297.8.7 million last year. They are 297 million this year. And approximately 233 million of those assets are long-term assets and buildings and equipment and amounts that have been paid into your pension. So a lot of those are just long-term assets. They're going to be around for a while. Liabilities decreased from 237.6, 106 million. That decrease was primarily in that your net pension liability and your TRS care liability That's an actuarial determined number. TRS hires an actuary annually to value your plan lab. That's not a number that you calculate or we calculate. We simply take the information they give us and put it on the. This is your balance sheet of your funds. I think this is probably a little more meaningful as it's more on a budget basis as a district books. As you can see, assets increased from 59.5 million, 70.1 million last year to this year. That increase is almost entirely in cash and investment. Liabilities increased from just under 16 million, 18.1. That's made up of things like accounts payable and then accrued wages that are due to district employees that haven't paid yet and also some deferred revenue, state revenue that has not been earned. Heard inflows of resources, 1.5 million. That's net property taxes. Soon as those get paid, that becomes revenue. If I net assets and liabilities, I'm left with fund balance. Fund balance increased 43.5, 55 million. And next, we're going to go over fund balance. We put fund balance into various categories and as I said- We put, um, fund balance into various categories and as I said, total fund balance was fifty-five million dollars. One million dollars of that's what we call non-spendable fund balance. That's inventory and prepaid assets for things like prepaid insurance. We have to set aside that amount of paid non-spendable balances. That'll be expended over the. Restricted fund balance, just under six point seven million dollars. That's made up primarily of two pieces. That's your debt service fund balance and then that is child nutrition fund balance. Those resources that have been received are restricted for future debt service payments and future child nutrition operations, just meaning they can't be used on any ongoing obligations for the district. They can only be used in specific programs. Committed fund balance is seven point one million dollars. That consists primarily of future, um, construction costs where the district has set aside some fund balance to pay for future construction, future capital equipment. It also includes your campus activity fund balance, which has been committed by the district for campus. If I net all that out, I'm left with unassigned fund balance, which is forty point two million dollars. It was thirty-five point four dollars. So. Specifically into general fund balance a little. Again, non-spendable fund balance was six hundred and seventy-nine thousand and that's inventory and prepaid. Restricted fund balance, which is for future debt service in the general fund, was six hundred and forty-four thousand. Committed fund balance, just under six point five million dollars. And again, that's for future construction, capital equipment. That leaves me with unassigned fund balance, forty point two million dollars. Unassigned fund balance represents approximately four point one months of average general fund expenditures, meaning if the general fund stopped taking in revenue, your fund balance will keep operations going for just a little over four months. That's fairly consistent with what we see in most of our school districts and we'd like to point that out with the board. And going to revenues, this is revenues for all governmental funds, remarkably consistent with last year. Last year was a hundred and fifty-five point two. This year it's a hundred and fifty-five point three. So very close to last year's. Break this up into three pieces. First is local revenue, which was sixty-seven point one million dollars this year. That's primarily gonna be property taxes. It'll also be interest income, some other, property tax. State revenue is primarily gonna be foundation payments that you get based on attendance and that went seventy-one, six, sixty-four dollars. Federal program revenues went from sixteen point five to twenty-three point four million dollars, increase of about six point nine million dollars. And that's primarily due to higher funding, SER or COVID funding, generally increasing some of the other grants. And, uh, total revenue quite consistent with last year. Expenditures, expenditures were a hundred and fifty-six point eight million last year. This year they were a hundred and forty-seven point two million. See, decrease in expenditures of about nine point six million, six percent. As you can see, that decrease was seen almost entirely capital outlay or construction. District just had less construction this year. Strode down expenditures. Other expenditures fairly consistent with the structure. That's all I have on the basic audit. We are required to do what's called a single audit since the district receives and spends more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal grant funds. Have to audit those funds. We don't look at every program we participate in. We have a risk-based approach to pick a sample of programs to look at each year. This year, we looked at child nutrition and then we also looked at SER or again the COVID money. As you know, when you get grants, there are things that you have to do with a grant funding. There are things you can't do. We look at the transactions recorded to that grant and make sure that we saw, saw no instances where the district did not comply with the grant. And again, this was a clean audit. We did not find any non-compliance or internal control issues for your controls over. That, that's all I had. I'd be glad to answer any questions. First, I would like to thank the district for the opportunity to work with, thank Dr. McFarland and the business office for their assistance. We run most of our requests through Jaime Guerrero. He does an excellent job of preparing, so I wanted. His preparation is excellent, both in terms of the quality and timeliness of his preparation. So it really helps us get in and get our work done and the district get back on with their business. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Again, thank you for that.
Thank you for being here, Kevin. Is anybody else have questions or can we let this young man hit the road to Comanche?
I know you mentioned that, uh, we're carrying a stronger fund balance this year. Is that, uh, typical, you said that was typical of a lot of districts here. They're, they're carrying a stronger fund balance as of, uh, year to year, last year versus this year?
Yeah, we're seeing increases in most. I think some of it's due to the, the COVID funding out.
Yeah.
Around forever.
Right. It's amazing that the state.
Down in future.
Amazing that the state funded seven million less and then federal government funded seven million more.
Sure.
To make our money about the same. That's incredibly coincidental.
Uh, yes, sir, it was.
I was just gonna make a comment about our, um, workers' comp claims. And this isn't, probably doesn't have anything to do with the audit. Just, um, from my information, in twenty-twenty, we had claims that we incurred of just a hundred and twenty-nine thousand and in twenty-twenty-one, we had claims incurred of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand. I'm actually on page sixty-nine.
Yeah, page sixty-nine.
So, um, I guess the question that, um, that we would need to answer is, you know, is that gonna be, um, something that is, we're gonna have moving forward and what type of, um, how, how do we set aside funds for, um, workers' comp claims? Because, or I, I don't even know historically what that's been. There's no indication. We got ten years of, of, um, historical information here, but there's not anything specifically on claims incurred. So I'm wondering if we, you know, if we talk about having a safe environment, uh, you know, is there something we need to be doing as a district to make us, our, our workers' environment more safe if we've got a four times, if we've increased four times in claims incurred? Does that make sense? Just a bad year. I mean, if it's just a bad year, that's okay, but if it's, if it's something that we've, um, historically, if we've been in the one hundred and thirty thousand dollars of claims incurred.
[inaudible].
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Jaime.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry I wasn't prepared to come up and, and speak, but, um, as far as workers' comp go, um, any one claim can certainly put us way over from any previous year. Uh, the way we handle our workers' comp claim, we, we take a percentage, uh, based on our, on our payroll expense. And, um, we have third-party administrators certainly, um, uh, administers that program. Uh, but we, we do have limitations as to our, our final payouts. And I will tell you that, uh, we're always a hundred percent accrued to our portion of that liability. And so regardless of what the claims are, our balance sheet currently has all the funds we need to cover any applicable claims. But, but again, one claim can certainly put us way over the top.
Right. And I'm just wondering if it's bad luck this year or if it's, you know, what they've been historically?
Well, we'd certainly have to.
Okay.
I guess dig into that history, but, um, I can't answer that now, but I can certainly get you that information. So.
Okay, thanks. And I'm not, you know, it's not that big a deal. I've just, I actually, um, looked through quite a bit of this stuff and I was curious about why we had, uh, claims that were higher than what we had previously. And I do know that one claims can certainly cause you a significant issue.
Yeah, definitely. And we certainly appreciate that someone's actually looking to this. So thank you.
The other thing, one other thing, and I'll leave you alone, uh, but on page one-twenty-seven, we have, um, a ten-year history of our percent of students eligible for free or reduced meals. And, uh, for almost that entire ten-year period, we averaged around sixty percent. In, in twenty, 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 twenty-one, um, we only had forty-seven point one percent of our students that were identified as percent of students eligible for free or reduced meals, which was a reduction from the previous year of about almost eight percent and, and again, about thirteen percent off what our average is. So, um, and I know that, uh, the number of students that are in those programs affects us on a number of funding issues. So I wanted to make sure that we are doing everything we can to identify those students. And I guess the other question I would have on that would be, I know moving forward where all of our students are being fed. So how are we gonna classify, is that still gonna be a standard that the state has for free and assisted school lunch programs when we're providing a free and assisted breakfast and lunch for every student? Does that make sense?
It, it certainly does. And, and, and again, that's something I cannot speak to personally. It's under the guidance of our nutrition director as far as, um, those percentages go. But we do know that the Department of Agriculture has made quite a bit of changes to our, uh, the food nutrition service as far as feeding everyone regardless of, um, of eligibility. And so that certainly could have affected our percentages, um, for parents returning those applications, which, uh, would definitely bring down their percentage.
Okay.
Mr. Lehman, what page was that?
On page one-twenty-seven.
No, I don't mind speaking also to the, to the last year as the way that, that got handled in the, um, school funding issue of it, because one of the things that every school district in, in the state dealt with was because of the number of students that you had, you remember, we were doing remote learning last year. So you had problems getting an accurate number of, of information back from students. And so what they allowed you to do in the state funding of it is to use the better of that current year or the previous year. And so basically, last year, we were funded for what we had in, in, uh, economically disadvantaged for the previous year based on that inability for us and many districts in the state to gather that information adequately. As far as moving forward and what's happening this year with the ability for everybody to receive the, the free and reduced lunch, um, where they've also required you still to, to, um, they've extended the period where they allowed you to take applications this year and continue to, to process those. Uh, my last count from data services that we had was right around the sixty percent mark as far as what we had collected for this year in, in free and reduced.
Okay. That makes me feel better if the state's gonna continue to, uh, require that as a standard.
Well, I don't, I don't know that they will next year.
Right.
As far as, um, but yeah, that's, that's always going to be a standard as far as part of your funding formula, but as far as, um, the, the free meals for everybody, I don't believe, uh, I don't have an indication of where they're going with that next year. Yeah.
But some of our funding's directly associated with the number of students that we have that are on a free or assisted school lunch program.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. In many, in many regards.
So we have to make sure we're counting as many students as possible.
Yes, sir. And so that's one of the things that, that we made a priority this year with our, our data services team to work on how, how to best collect that information as our students came back because we knew we weren't gonna have that opportunity this year to use the better of.
Okay.
A year.
Any other questions for Kevin or, uh, in regard to our audit? All right. Then I appreciate you and your firm for the work that you put in and, um, wish you a safe trip home. Thank you.
You very much.
Thank you.
I'd just like to also say before we end there, I appreciate Kevin coming out and, and being part of this tonight, but I just wanna say the, the team that we have over there with Jaime and Hope and Christina and, and Jason out of the purchasing department, that entire team over there is, uh, does a tremendous job and, uh, obviously, uh, contributes widely to the, to the findings that they found with, um, uh, internal controls and no, no problems with weaknesses there and that type of thing. So I appreciate the staff that we have in that.
All right, Dr. McFarland, I don't know if you want, we're just gonna consider bills, accounts, financial statements for December twenty-twenty-one?
We need to approve the audit.
Yeah. All right. We're gonna approve the audit.
I'll make a motion to approve the August thirty-first annual financial report and auditor's opinion.
All right. We have a motion by Dr. Kingman, a second by Mr. Dindel to approve the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one audit report. Is there any other board discussion? Any public comments? I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion passes. All right. Uh, now, consider bills, accounts, financial statements for December twenty-twenty-one. Um, I think Dr. McFarland went over that, uh, at our last meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Just as a reminder, all of our bills and accounts and our checkbook are available online under financial transparency on our website. Um, but as we discussed last week, I'll make the motion to approve our bills and accounts for December twenty-twenty-one.
A second.
I have a motion by Dr. Kingman, a second by Ms. Mizele Flint, uh, to approve this particular agenda item. Is there any other board discussion? Any public comment? Not all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Now, it shows I'm up next and I'm not, I, I know a little bit what I'm up, but, uh, is to consider and receive superintendent evaluation support documents. I know this is the time of year that we're, uh, in the next few months, we're gonna be considering superintendent's evaluation and we'll be probably, Becky, you need to have something on the agenda item each month if we want to discuss it or go into, um, closed session. But, um, I know that, uh, Dr. Detloff has been working on this. So, um, the support documents, what support documents are we talking about tonight?
Yes, sir. Uh, let me add to that, Mr. Parker. So, uh, as, uh, tradition, um, historically continues, uh, usually it takes a couple of board meetings to complete the process, uh, review all the documents completed, uh, and, and turned in, uh, for the superintendent evaluation. So, uh, this evening, we have our evaluation document, uh, that we will, I will be providing momentarily to all of you. Uh, so we have those evaluation documents. I think you'll, uh, have more clarity, uh, thanks to our great, uh, principal presentation. So, uh, the data reviewed in the evaluation document, uh, will be reflective of what much of our, our principals shared with you, uh, over the next steps, guided reading data, uh, map data. Uh, and then we are scheduled, uh, February fourteenth in our pre-agenda, uh, to review statewide assessment information with you all as well as, uh, we'll also have, and you've heard it tonight, uh, our midpoint data, that window opened, um, for the map testing and assessment. Um, so some of that, some of our campuses have completed that, but that window is extended next week. So, uh, February, we will also have some of the, uh, middle of the year, the MOI, uh, middle of year data to provide you too. So we've got a, uh, comprehensive document, uh, this evening that I'll be passing along to all of you. Uh, and then, at board's discretion, uh, we'll take a couple of meetings, uh, and an action item in February, however you want to.
Aren't there being action item in February?
Yes, sir. I think that's typically the case. Is that right?
I will see if we're ready for action in February or not.
April.
Well, they said we're gonna have a few meetings. We're gonna discuss it and then February's next month, isn't it? So, uh, well, we'll see where we are. But, all right. The documents are, you.
I'll get them right now.
All right. Well, is it something, let me just ask this, is this something we're gonna discuss tonight or just something we take home and review?
Yes, we take home.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we, if, if that's what we're gonna do, if that's the last thing on our agenda tonight, why don't, uh, if all you're gonna do is hand us something, why don't we just, uh, close out our meeting? Um, our announcements are on February fourteenth, we'll have our finance pre-agenda workshop and then our regular board meeting will be February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. And unless anybody else has anything further, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you for being here.